I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mikes?
Sandy, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Hall?
President.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Here.
Councilmember Parham?
President.
Councilmember Tapolero?
Here.
Mayor Palfini?
Here. Welcome, everybody. We have an audience. Now I can say legitimately, is there any discussion from the audience? Any, actually, we don't have public comment right now. Council election of officers is the first thing after the roll call. That will be the election of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. We will start this off with opening up.
I will open the floor and accept nominations for the position of mayor.
I'll nominate Ken Palfini.
Ken, do you accept?
Say your name.
Sure.
Then I'll say, no, I will not accept the nomination.
Okay, I will open the floor to nominations for mayor.
Daryl Parham? You're going down the line?
I will ask, can we ask for a vote on, Daryl, will you?
He needs to accept and then I need, and then ask for a second.
I will accept.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
All in favor of Daryl?
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll open the floor for mayor pro tem.
I make a motion, I nominate Ken Palfini?
Second.
Ken, do you accept?
You don't have, you don't have to, I just thought it would be a good transition.
That, I can do that, that's fine, because I think it'll turn, I'll do that, that's fine.
And Mark, you second?
Oh, again.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll take, accept a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have our new mayor, mayor pro tem, thank you.
So we swap seats around?
So I have to move?
Yeah. Or actually, I go to her, she go, he goes to here, and she goes to there.
I have to move, I'm sorry, Bob, you get Ken.
We're gonna be buddies now, buddy.
Yeah. She's my coach, she keeps me. It's a big job, Ken.
Oh, I'm used to it, yeah.
She's a puppeteer. It's a big job over here, Ken.
Reach all, man.
Big job, sit with Bob.
Mark, leave on Mark for a while.
That's a big move, thank you.
Yidoki.
I'll miss you soon. I know, I'll still be here, Bob, don't worry. There should be music playing.
Right.
Here's the, here's that borderline.
Do we need, let's get some tape, let's get some tape right here.
I'll get some tape.
Oh, wait, I forgot my water.
And I forgot mine, swap waters.
This yours too? Right.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is the time for, but I think it, I would like to make sure the public knows that I will be stepping down at the end of my term, and I believe.
I will also be, I'm not running again.
We need, do we need to be, be some people to start thinking about, you know, getting involved in city government?
I need more room, can I have some?
All right, well, now that we've shuffled chairs around, we will move on to item four, acceptance of agenda urgency items.
I will move that we add an urgency item that has come to the attention of the city, which is item, we can call it item C if we would like.
Mike?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we add something to the urgency item, which has come to the city's attention after the, the agenda was posted, and that is urgency, we can add it as urgency item C regarding change order for the Millfire Water Recovery Project.
Is that under council business?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, now we will move to non-agenda public comments. I'm glad to see we have some public today. Do we have any non-agenda public comments? Anything we comment on cannot be acted on tonight. We'd love to hear any comments the public has. Okay, seeing as we have none, we'll move on to item six, council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments. We'll go ladies first and start with councilmember Tapolero.
Really? Oh, that's cool, okay. I have a couple things here. We, I wanted to let everybody know, I hope everybody in Weed, in the city of Weed knows, about the senior van, and that it is free to all of the seniors in, within the city limits. You just need to make a phone call down to the community center, they will take you to doctor's appointments, they'll take you shopping within, within the city, and it goes, I believe, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and for the Lake Shastina seniors, there's only certain days that they go out to Lake Shastina, but it's $5 per ride, and to just call the community center, and they will give you the driver's phone numbers to go off of that.
How old is it?
How old do you have to be to get that?
Sixty.
Well, you know, talk about you're a senior if you're 50, so I don't think, sixty?
It's sixty, I think it will be established.
Was it sixty for the, for the van?
Well, I know it's sixty for senior lunch, so I don't know.
Oh, okay, and that's the same thing, and that's, the senior lunch is also available for rides to that. And that's all I have at this moment.
All right. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have much other than, I just noticed that the Weed Recreation is supporting a open gym on Saturday nights from eight o'clock to 11, 11 o'clock on Sunday nights, Saturday nights, and it's open to the public, and we kind of, kind of shuffle the age groups, but it's open to everybody, and we hope that, see as many people as we can there. We, it's, we had the program going until COVID, so we're, this is basically, we're just starting, taking off, we're starting up where we left off, up at the high school, it'll be at Weed, Weed High School Gymnasium, eight to 11.
Especially, I would notice that it was well received, I was at a couple of those Saturday events. The kids seem to be all having a great time, so it's time away, typically away from, I wouldn't say 100% cell phone proof, but it's been typically a time away from cell phones and, and more of social conversation.
Honestly, and just on a quick note, there was several nights we had over 75 kids up there, playing, 75 people came to play, college included.
That's it, Mom?
All right, councilmember Tapolero had something to add.
I forgot. Monday, the 18th, Tuesday, the 19th, and Wednesday, the 20th, the fire department will be taking Santa and Mrs. Claus around the town. Their schedule, there's a schedule out on the fire department page, I believe it's on the chamber page, is it on PD's page? Yeah, okay.
It's on the rec page, don't I think?
Yeah, starts at 5:30.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Believe it or not, I don't really have anything to say, other than I hope everybody has a great Christmas and gets to spend it with their family, and thank all the staff and everybody that puts the hard work in for us, and, and even the council, believe it or not, yeah, they do a good job, so, and staff, so, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Mayor Pro Tem Palfini?
Mayor Pro Tem, a new title, which is for a long time, thank you. I want, first of all, I want to thank Daryl for taking the helm, that's a great addition. I did attend the Christmas tree lighting, we could spark that up a little bit, I think, maybe a few suggestions on maybe how to do that, we can maybe get our heads together, and it, Daryl was there. I think there's some ideas I was tossing around, but I, it was a nice event, it's a great little location that Bob helped build, and a lot of this community helped contribute to. I also went to the Christmas fair, not as, just as a citizen, and up at the College of the Siskus, and that was well attended, too, and again, Daryl was there, Daryl seems to be everywhere, more than I am, so, that was good, and pretty much, I'd just like to thank everybody on this council, it was a good Christmas.
All right, and I have a lot to report. I was at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, I'd like to thank everybody from staff in the Chamber of Commerce to help to support that, and that's something we look forward to every year in the community. It was very cold, so hopefully people can dress warm and we get some more attendance next year, as well as like, thank the COS Foundation for putting on their annual Christmas bazaar, people from all over the county and now even further south come to that every year to Weed for that, so that's, nice, the college to do that. That is all I have for this month, and so with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the.
We, we need to make it an adjustment, I'm sorry.
We need to pull item eight.
No, we don't need to pull item.
You're just recusing yourself from item eight.
I'm recusing myself on item eight, the holiday.
Incentives.
Incentives, so I will not be making a vote on that.
And councilmember Mazzone, you just need to identify the reason for your recusal.
The reason is, is my wife, my spouse works for the city staff, and would not be a good move on anyone's part.
So, because this is consent, councilmember Mazzone does not have to leave the dais, however, I'd ask the clerk to make sure that it's reflected in the minutes that Mr. Mazzone is not voting on that item H of the consent agenda.
You, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
It's, it wasn't amended.
It wasn't amended. Can't, hey.
I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, noting that councilmember Mazzone is not voting on item H due to his recusal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for my purposes, is there actually nobody in the audience?
No, there are three members in the audience, one city staff, two citizens.
So we will need to make sure that no one has public comment prior to taking a vote.
Apologies, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? All right, seeing as there is none, we will go back and revote for that. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as motioned?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you for.
Every month, he's.
Guiding me. Okay, we have no items removed from consent, so we will move on to council business. So item A, Public Works by motion, we will consider resolution 29, 2023 for conditional award of contract with Gerlick Mitchell for the SCADA system pending HCD's approval.
Okay, this is, excuse me, this is a change order for our water system, for our SCADA system, grant funded through HCD, CDBG, we're asking to award the contract upon HCD's approval.
Any discussion amongst the council?
I would just like to make sure that the audience understands that SCADA is a detection system for water levels in our water tanks.
I was gonna, what does SCADA stand for? I'm sorry, never mind. I can tell, by the way, you were looking at me, never mind.
We're gonna have to have an acronym handbook.
Yes.
And my understanding is that the SCADA system also has an alarm system as well. So it'll be a worthwhile upgrade for our water system. Any other discussion?
No, I. I will move to approve resolution number 29, 2023, resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed.
I'll second.
To award a contract for the SCADA system project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Parham?
Oh, I apologize, I will get this down, are there?
The other thing that's worth noting is that SCADA apparently stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition.
Thank you for that.
Nice ghoul, David.
All right, do we have any public comments on the motion for the SCADA system approval? All right, seeing that there is none, I will ask again for a vote, since I missed a public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item B, Public Works by motion, we will consider resolution number 30, 2023, awarding the contract for the bypass water supply pipeline construction project to Shasta Services Incorporated, DBA Timberworks.
Hey, this is a project we've been working on since the 2014 fire. We tried to get approval to connect the water systems for resiliency in our community, and we are finally getting down to the point where we are ready to enter a contract and try to go to construction early spring, possibly doing some this winter, so.
Excellent, do we have any public comment on this resolution?
Good job.
All right, seeing that there is none, I will entertain a motion if there is one to be made.
Mr. Mayor, I may, I make a, I'll make a motion to, to accept the resolution number 30-2023, is that's where we're on?
Yes, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed to award a contract to the bypass water supply pipeline project.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, pending public comment. We have none, so all will, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to item 10, which is a presentation from the city manager. Oh, that's right, I, my apologies. So we have the urgency item that we added as item C, and this is a change order for the Millfire Water Recovery Projects.
Hey, this is change order number two for the Millfire Recovery Project, it's gonna consist of paving Wakefield and parts of Alameda, or Kennedy, Lincoln, I don't know, over there, till we run out of money, basically, this will finish off the grant, and we'll, we'll put the rest of the money into paving.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Sandy, do you see that this is resolution number 32, and the last one was number 30? Okay, and that's okay?
Yes, because Craig added one into consent, and I had everything printed, and I didn't want to waste paper.
Perfect. Thank you for not wasting paper.
It's 32.
It's 32.
32, 2023.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any public comments on the urgency item to repave as needed? We have no public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion for, to pass resolution number 32, 2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed to authorize a change order number two from Sunrise Excavating for the Millfire Water Recovery Project.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, there was no public comments, all in favor to approve resolution 32, 2023?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we will move on to.
Slow down, it's 10 to 6, no.
I know, right?
Checks, checks in, checks in the tight tendons.
All right, so we will move on to item 10, which is a presentation from the city manager regarding restaurant and other potential business incentives.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, before you tonight is the, a short presentation dealing with the business restaurant, and restaurant incentives and facade improvement programs, excuse me, so I, I have approached the council about a year ago, after I went to a, a conference somewhere, and they talked about business incentives being pretty lucrative for cities to take a look at, specifically targeting businesses that they're in desperate need of, and so that's what we're gonna talk about a little bit tonight. So the purpose of these incentives is to, like I say, create a more balance in our retail, possibly commercial and other entities as well as they come along. Right now, we definitely have a desperate need for sit-down restaurants, that's, that's one of the things that we need, not necessarily fast food, but good sit-down restaurants, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that, and some other opportunities that we may have, retail-wise, and, but this doesn't just tie our hands to restaurants and retail, we could, you know, work these incentives to other folks that are, you know, wanting to come in and do some workforce improvement, and adding on some workforce here within our local economy. That's just an example, this is one I just pulled up from Troutdale, Oregon, where they approved for some incentives to get, just like what we have, we have a need for some sit-down restaurants, they did the same thing there, as well as other cities, so here, here are some of the basic ways that several cities have gone about doing it. Some cities do a, what they call a broker incentive, which they'll match a restaurant or a business agent's commission up to so much a dollar amount, if they get a new lease, that's a direct result in a new restaurant or retail development occurring within a specific timeframe. The other ones that they do are specific types of new business incentives, where you, you focus and target in on certain things that you only want to do, here's some examples, like I said, sit-down restaurants, any sort of new retail, some cities are really making a big push for craft breweries, wineries, distilleries are a big thing now that you're seeing out. I threw the pharmacy in there, too, because that's the number one thing that I hear from people besides sit-down restaurants are pharmacies, why, you know, we need a pharmacy, and in fact, a couple days ago at lunch, I went on to the DMV to get my tag on my pickup renewed, and I stopped by that little medicine shop right next to the DMV, and I said, why aren't you in Weed? And so they gave me some excuse that, well, we deliver to Weed, and I said, but people want to talk to the pharmacist, when they go pick up their stuff, they want to talk to the pharmacist, and that's what we need, we need a pharmacy here in town, and because I think also, not only would it serve the citizens here in Weed, but the citizens in Shastina as well, because they have to either go to Wyrica or to Mount Shasta, and Mount Shasta has three pharmacies, so to me, it'd make more sense to have a local pharmacy, and before I got here, that's one of the things that, you know, people had, and then it was taken out a few years, I think, before I got here. So the other thing, incentives are permit waivers, the permits and fees, a lot of cities do strictly that, if it's a new, especially if it's a new construction, there's a lot of cost associated with impact fees and those type of things, and this is something to where the city has some flexibilities in offering permit waivers to offset the cost of building and planning permits and, and those type of things. The other one is a matching grant, some cities are out there, they just do a small business matching grant, where if a company comes in, now, by the way, these are all, would all have to be vetted as well, these aren't just gonna be people that just show up and, you know, say, we write them a check for whatever, on a matching grant for 25,000, this is actually gonna be vetted by staff and making sure, and the council approval, and making sure that these are legit businesses that we want within the community, so I just wanted to reiterate that, it's something that, you know, the council will have final approval on. So those are the four, what I would say, common, and you can do a mix and a match of all those, I think that's, those are important to have in our tool bag as well. The next thing I want to talk about is a facade improvement program, several cities throughout California have a downtown storefront facade programs, where they offer financial assistance to commercial properties existing and new that come into the community that want to put in a business, or they have an established business, and they would like to improve the facade, that's one of the things that, unfortunately, a lot of businesses get started, and one of the things that they forget about, you know, they put all their money into equipment, all, into all these things, they gotta hire employees, and then at the end of the deal, they go, oh, crap, I forgot, I need a sign, or, you know, I need to, you know, have it to where it's presentable, that's what you'll see, a lot of businesses, they'll start off, and, 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 you know, that's something that's crucial to their, especially if you're a retailer or a restaurant, if you don't have a good sign and people just drive by, it, it makes a huge difference, because they need to know you're in business as well, so, and unfortunately, you'll see some that'll just slap a temporary vinyl banner out there, and, you know, spend tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars on a business, you know, my, my wife is a commercial broker, and she tells me that all the time, you know, these, these guys get all excited, and they get, and then the last thing they think about is, the last piece of the puzzle is a good sign, a good facade, so we would have the ability to have some matching grant money for that as well, so that is something, and I just want to let everybody know, you know, you're thinking to yourself, Bob, well, where are we gonna get this money? And I've got a couple things I'd like to propose to the council, we receive about $370,000 a year in TOT taxes, that could be something that we could pull from, we also have cannabis tax that was passed a few years ago, it's down a little bit than what it used to be, it's down to about 70,000 a year that we get in cannabis taxes, local cannabis taxes, not our sales tax from the state as well, but those are some funds that we can, we can pull from as well, just depending on, you know, the council's approval and what they would like to do. But here's what they do also, facade improvements, they do matching grants, most cities do these matching grants, up to a certain level, you know, either five, 10, $20,000, just depending on the, the improvement that's wanting to be applied here. The other way they do it are these facade forgivable loan programs, I found a few cities that do this, essentially, what they do is you come in, you take out a loan from the, the city, you say you need $25,000 worth of improvements, the city would do that in the form of a loan and place a lien on the building and the property owner, and it would be forgiven after five years if the property is, you know, kept free of blight and, and other things, so that's, that's another approach to do it, so matching grants or forgivable loans. The next thing, I just wanted to show you real quickly some of the case studies around, that's one right there showing a facade improvement program recipient, that, this is one out of, I found out of Great Bend, Kansas, but these are definitely, you can see a huge improvement in the, in the front of the buildings there, these are just, like I say, scattered throughout California, throughout the country, the one on the left there is, you know, before and after, it looks like a, you know, small mom-pop business, looks much better, the other one I really liked to the right, because it's an old historic building, you can tell they, they, yep, they, they put a lot of work into improving that as well, it looks like it took an old firehouse, is what it looks like, so that they improved it, turned it into a power equipment building. Then up at the top, they've got a photo store, a photo lab, I think it's somewhere out of the bay, they, like I said, nice improvement there, the other one is a little pizza joint, that they've got a before and after with that. Anyway, what it does is, you know, one of the things we have to do, and one of the things we're gonna be working on diligently, and I've let all, everybody here know, you know, getting our, you know, South Weed is starting to get some momentum, retail-wise, we've, surprisingly, over the past couple of months, we're seeing a lot of movement down there, and I think we're gonna see, you know, more retail, more businesses opening up pretty soon down there, but our downtown is, is vital to us, because that's the heart and soul of any community, is their main street, and I think this is something that we're gonna have to take into consideration as well, when, when it comes to this, I see the majority of these facade improvements are gonna be primarily, probably downtown, and, and the other thing is, the council can restrict the program to a certain area, so if we only want to do downtown and maybe part of the boulevard, we can, we can put a, you know, a lasso around that and just have it for the, for that particular region as well, so we don't have to open it up to everybody, but we can, so those are the things you gotta be, you know, looking at as well, this is again, some more before and after photos, I really like the one on the right there, they took an old, looks like maybe an old Blockbuster or some sort of store, and they, and they. and they changed it and made it look really nice. Same thing with the one up at the top there, took an old building and really improved the facade on that to a really nice business. So there's lots and lots of case studies showing that these facade improvement programs work, but it's just got to be able to get, you know, everybody on the same page. I've got, before you leave tonight, I've got everybody just kind of a little overview of this PowerPoint presentation, as well as several examples of business incentives from multiple jurisdictions. I think I've got, everything I've got in here is a California-based city, so, and of course, anything that we do, we'll have to vet through our city attorney and make sure everything's on the up and up. And, but anyway, does anybody have any questions in regards to this?
I like.
Yeah, I think anything that promotes business and specifically things that bring employment, so that our young people have places to work here in the city as opposed to having to go elsewhere, I think is a positive.
And shop here as well, you know?
Yeah.
Because that's important. And I think by, if you've got a vibrant downtown where everybody takes pride in their businesses and the, you know, the business fronts, that's important as well, you know, not only downtown, but the boulevard, south side as well. But you're right, but in order for these businesses to be successful, we got to get them here and then recruit them here and then get them to stay here. So, and we've had, even since I've been here, we've lost a few businesses that have left and gone to other municipalities, and I think that's a shame. I think we ought to be able to keep and recruit those businesses and keep them here for not only their job creation, but, you know, sales tax and everything else that comes along with it. And once you get a vibrant, and we've all been to different cities up here in North State and even, you know, south of here, but once you get a really vibrant downtown going, people want to be a part of it. It creates its own energy. It creates a lot of excitement when they see new business after new business start coming in. And I know we've got some work to do in downtown as far as some nuisance and abatement issues that we've got to take care of, and we're going to try to get on top of that real soon. But this is something that I think, like I said, could be helpful to set that foundation for our community for multiple generations. So at this point, I entertain any questions?
Could we have potentially, in the years past, we had a kind of an economic development committee that's kind of dissipated with actually COVID. And maybe at least a couple council members at least sit on something that maybe starts looking at that, and then this, this in particular?
Yeah, I would love that, have two council members, so you don't have to worry about the, working about the Brown Act, come meet with staff and sit down and go over, and of course, our new finance director, and visit with her about funding and those, those things too. I'd love to have that. So maybe at the next council meeting, we have a, I don't know if it was, was it formalized council members?
I think we did formalize it as to...
It was, but I don't, I don't think it mattered how many.
I think it got a little dicey when council members, too many of us showed up.
Yeah, but it was a lot of community people.
It was, we called it CDAC. I mean, that was the initials of it. And we had, it actually, the Bull's Fire actually was, initiated the breakdown of it. We got scattered, but we had a...
Who was the Bull's Fire?
We had, we had great attendance. We were, we were talking, you know, probably 10, 15 people meeting and ready to go. We were talking about signage, we had, we were going on signage, we had, we had done a lot of work on the signage.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I don't think it's going to take much to get that going, especially if we can, you know, what we're talking about here is, it's emotional. I mean, downtown is, that's an emotional hub. I mean, things happen from, from there, and like it or not, life is emotional.
Yes, it is.
No, I think it'd be good to have an economic development committee established because then we can bring in other leadership from the city, business owners, chamber commerce members, get everybody to work together as a team to help revitalize the businesses downtown and throughout the rest of the city.
Sure.
And that's what it was, if I recall, it was.
It started to work that way.
Yeah, and started to work with business people. And, and in their defense, the people that are in the buildings right now, they look good.
Yeah.
Our downtown looks good.
But there could be some improvements.
Where there are people in the buildings.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, and even the ones that are the existing buildings, they may, there are businesses that are successful, may want to improve their facades, and, and this is a way of doing that, a tool in the toolbag to do that, so.
Even just a building owner, owner might have...
Sure.
Be able to utilize some of this to increase the facade, may not be a particular subject matter or retailer, but just to improve the overall look of a building so it's tenable.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's all I have, and if you have any questions for the audience or...
Any public comment? I know. I think we just need to laminate one there.
Uh-oh. Hi, my name is Dan Parker. I'm quasi-commercial broker, commercial developer. For the last 40 years, I've specialized in retail and restaurant. In addition to retail and restaurant, would be even accountant or something like that. But predominantly shopping center and freestanding buildings. The thought of improving facade is critical. And if I could make a recommendation, I would, I would create, I would start with a small zone, maybe it is Main Street and downtown, that would be your downtown, correct? And, and even that, maybe section it off, and let's say if there's 100% of that avenue, take maybe 20%, dedicate the incentives to that over a timeline to either the retailer or the property owner. I'm, I'm not as, as excited about the broker program, and incidentally, I own a brokerage company that's just strictly commercial, so you would think I'd be the first one to chime the opposite. But, but I think the funds really need to go toward improving that facade and the overall feeling for the consumer, because what you're trying to do is create a reason for them to want to go into downtown, and, and that being a fun experience. So let's say if you were starting at one side, and the treatments of that not only would be the facade, or I would suggest not only be the facade of the retail and the restaurant, but that, that takes place as you're walking down the street, and that meaning lighting, certain, and a theme to your lighting, even maybe music that is common throughout the street, so that there's that experience when they're walking down the sidewalk and they're looking into different buildings. To go past a vacant building is such a huge turnoff for any consumers, I'm sure it is to all of you. So I, I love the fact that you're pushing that direction, and by point of disclosure, I met Tim for the first time today, and it was just by coincidence, I came in to look at a little building in town. It's in pretty sad shape, it happens to be also on Main Street. I can give you the address. It's 92 Main Street. So it's a little...
Triangle.
It's a little triangle, very awful shaped building, but it's, it's part of that downtown. And it, I don't know, you get that feeling, you want to get that feeling for a consumer that they want to be in this district, and then, and then you can expand it out from them, from there. My concern would be that you, that you'd be so short on funds, and then I think the conversation would be, how do you, how do you lure in more funds through grants and so forth to help, to help fund those? I could share with Tim a couple, you all, a couple of small buildings that we've redone. I, I like those, although we represent properties that are, that are close to 700,000 feet. But my, my interests are really in small buildings. And I all, and I will forward those onto you so you can take a look. But we, the last couple of buildings, one was an optometrist building that was built in the 30s. We redid that, and that is now a gift store and interior decorator. And then I also brought in a little boutique nursery next to it, and boutique meaning just a small one. But, but the theme for that consumer, once they hit the property, is enchanting, and that's really what I think you guys need. That, that, if you could, if you form a committee, I would say, let's, let's form a committee to try to create an enchanting experience for the consumer. And that, of course, will come with retail sales. If you can incentivize a retailer, but I, you don't want, you don't want to drain that pot too quickly, that's the problem. I would say that our average on small buildings would be probably $100,000 of improvements toward the front, nothing on the inside yet. But once you redo that outside, it, they'll, what you want is a consumer to drive by and go, ooh, that's really cute, let's pull in there, we'll check it out. At that point, it's up to the retailer, the restaurateur, to impress them on their product. And that's pretty much all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I got a question?
Sure.
First of all, welcome.
Oh, thank you.
We certainly are listening to you. And are, are you local? Let's say if we form our committee, are you able to come and make a present?
Unfortunately, I'm not. I'm actually, and I hate to say it all out, but I'm Southern California.
Okay.
And so, but I do, I purchased a small building in Mount Shasta.
How about Skype or something?
Oh, we can certainly do that, be happy to.
It would certainly, to get our, the incentive, I think you, you give us, you know, some paths, and to get our, our committee, I think you'd be really instrumental in giving us some energy.
If you'd listen, I'd be happy to.
Okay, great.
Try me.
Literally, Dan just walked into City Hall today to talk about, is it Hector's Old Building or Hector's?
Hector's.
Hector's, Hector's. And he wanted to, so he and John talked about it, and then John introduced me to him, and I said, you know, we're having a meeting tonight, and we're going to talk about incentives. And he was like, okay, well, maybe I'll show up, and I'm glad he did, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
There is a higher power.
It wasn't coincidence.
I know. When he walked in and he said that, I was like, you need to come to the council meeting tonight, so.
That's literally dragging him off the street.
Exactly. And that, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you.
Nice job, Coach. That was a good job.
All right, let's move on to item 11, which is staff reports. Start with Chief Duncan.
I do have something. He has to turn my mic on, though. I just want to give an update on our radio situation. We did put in for a grant last year, it was a FEMA grant, just found out we did not get that grant. However, that's bad news, but we don't just sit back and wait for those grants, because sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. And if we get, it was, you know, radios in the meantime, we can always turn it down. So we did get, out of the 18 radio, handheld radios that we needed, we did get 13 of them through other grants this year. So all of our apparatus no longer has those brick radios that I showed you guys. They're all gone. We got rid of them all. We still need five more, but we are putting in for a regional grant through the Cal, through the Siskiyou County Fire Chiefs Association. We gave them all the information of what radios we still need, because we still need mobile radios, which are the ones that are mounted inside the rigs, and a couple, and then the five handhelds, obviously. And they're going to put it in as a regional grant this year for the whole region of Siskiyou County, so we still have a chance to get that, so. We did get $10,000 from Crystal Geyser, which gave us four radios, and then the Cal Fire 50/50 matching grant for $20,000, which gave us eight radios. And then we actually got a radio from CSA3. If you guys don't know what that is, it's County Service Area 3. There's a dollar that you have to spend on your tax bill if you live in the area, and that dollar goes towards a committee that we spend it on EMS and fire equipment. So we got a radio from them this last year too, so.
Excellent. When will we know about the other grant for the regional?
The regional one, they're just getting all the information together. It's going to be a FEMA grant, which is due in January, and then you don't find out for a year.
Okay.
So again, we won't wait around to get these, we'll try to get them other means, because we never know if it's going to get accepted or not.
Excellent.
The regional ones have a better chance of getting accepted, so.
Is it the whole Chiefs Association?
Yeah.
That are all, so everybody could get one or two?
Or, yeah.
In the county?
Yeah, or all of them, maybe, so. And then I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because I don't think we'll be here again until after that, so.
Thanks.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to our finance director, Mr. Porterfield.
I don't have anything new to report at this time, just moving forward.
All right, on to Director Sharp.
I have nothing to report tonight because Joe won't let me.
All right, and Chief Mayberry.
I just want to let everybody know, we did swear in a new dispatcher today. Sarah Platt, she will be joining our dispatcher corps. Really excited to have that position filled. Looking forward to having her as part of the team, and we do have a couple applicants for officers and backgrounds, hoping to get our staffing back up. But again, it's not, we haven't reached the end of that process, it's a background process, so I'm not, you know, fingers crossed, but, you know, hopefully we can get them all the way through and get those positions filled.
How many, short are we on officers?
We're currently short, we're down two, and we have one in backgrounds that's planning on leaving. So we could potentially be down three if the ones in backgrounds don't pass, so.
All right, on to the city clerk.
No report, just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. See you next year.
All right. And Mr. Ruderman, our counsel.
Oh, he's down here. Thank you, yes. One update for the council related to the California Business Roundtable measure, the, the proposal that's going to be on the November ballot, that would substantially limit local government's ability to collect revenue. As I believe you're aware, the governor and legislature petitioned the California Supreme Court, asking for the court to review the legality of the measure prior to the election to determine whether or not it should even go on the ballot. And Michael Colentuno from our firm provided the amicus brief from the, from Cal Cities, as well as a lot, a number of other agencies, local government agencies. And so I think it was two weeks ago, the California Supreme Court actually came out and said they would take the case. So they have ordered briefing on the merits of whether or not the Business Roundtable measure actually constitutes a constitutional revision, which cannot be approved by the voters, it requires a constitutional convention, as well as some other issues that were raised in the petition. So we will be having the ability to get the California Supreme Court's take on that prior to November 2024, and I'm hopeful that Michael will be able to write another helpful amicus brief in support of local government. That's all that I have. Happy holidays to everyone as well.
You too.
Thank you.
You too, David.
All right, and to the city manager.
I got a few things I'd like to just give some quick updates on. Through the Siskiyou Media Council, we have applied the media council for 12 different low wattage FM radio licenses, and we applied for one for the city of Weed to have one as well. And I know a lot of people are looking like, why would you want an FM station license?
Music downtown.
Well, that would be one way, so one way to get it down there. But, but the purpose of it is twofold. One would be in the event of a huge disaster, such as like what the Paradise Fire, where everything is gone, including all your communications, internet, everything. The city, we would probably put a little, and by the way, if we do get a transmitter, we're going to use grant dollars, so it won't cost the city anything. So the Siskiyou Media Council's looking out for, looking for grant dollars to pay for these. But we've got 12 of them scattered throughout Siskiyou County, different places, and we should have our notification in about a month whether or not we're going to get the FM license. But it would be beneficial in the, in the event of a horrible disaster where there's no internet, cell phone, at least if you can get tuning your FM radio station, most of us still have one of those in our car. And in fact, we talked about with the media council, even some cities give out weather radios, we could give out little FM radios like we had when we were kids to listen to the ballgames. So if something happened, you would at least be getting a message to tell you where to go, where's the shelter, all these things. So anyway, it's, I hope we never have to use it, but it's there in case we did, and we could, Councilmember Tavallaro, we could actually promote different things that are going on through the community on this as well. So, I mean, it doesn't have to be a live DJ, this is going to be just, if we have something on, it'll just be recordings of, you know, different things going on.
That's one of the things that has, was mentioned at both fires. That's one of the things that has, was mentioned at both fires, was, you know, we all have phones, but my 80-year-old neighbor might not have a phone, and if she does, she doesn't know how to work it, and how are we getting, and of course, they're not on Facebook, how are we getting communication to these people?
That's it.
And that's.
This would be one, one method.
Could be, because they could use a radio.
And I heard the same thing from some of our elders in the community, when we were doing the updates with the mill fire, everything was done via Facebook and the internet, but not everybody, and some, I mean, we were doing these updates in a town where we had no power for five days, so, you know, you know what I'm saying? So, people have to have their phone charged, they have to have internet access, if you, if you don't have any power, you don't have any Wi-Fi in your house. So, I mean, it's, there's some, and then if the cell tower burns down, you don't have any cell coverage, so there's, it's, anyway, that's just a, a method for us to be able to utilize that. Next thing I want to talk about real quickly, is, we mentioned it earlier, the Tesla lot, it's coming along. John Pemberton has been in communication with the folks from Tesla, that we are gonna be getting the latest and greatest V4 chargers, superchargers there, and, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks to a month, we'll get those, not we, but Tesla, will get those installed, and will open up our lot. John and I are also working on a map, kind of a campus map of downtown, to where, when the folks come off I-5 and charge their car, they can look at this big map and see, okay, there's a restaurant here, I need this, there's a, you know, Dollar General over here, there's a nice sit-down restaurant over here. Those are the type of things we want people to be able to see, once they get off the freeway and they're not familiar with our town, to be able to be, have immediate access to that as well. As I stated earlier in the previous meeting, we seem to have gotten a lot of interest in retail in the South Side, staff and I have been very busy fielding calls and Zoom meetings with potential developers on the South Side, which is, which is very exciting. Lincoln Heights, the rebuild is, is coming along, my Public Works crew has done a great job over there, and working with the contractors and getting that done. There was a holiday dinner this last Saturday with the survivors, I attended, wasn't as well-attended as I was hoping it would be, but it was, you know, it was fun, just sitting down and breaking bread with some of the folks that, you know, lost their homes, it was good just to sit down and visit with them. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know is, Dan, we are also in the middle, you didn't know this, we have a storefront arts project that is kicking off. I have talked to the executive director, and we're hoping to have all the, she has commissioned six different artists for downtown, and we have six different buildings that have allowed for the store, not, not all of them are gonna be painted, some of them are gonna be actual art in the windows, something pleasant, like he's talked about, when you're walking by, as opposed to a vacant. I walked by one of ours today, and they have an old toilet sitting in the front of the retail, I was like.
Hopefully with some flowers growing.
No, but I was thinking, wow, what a, what a charming place. So anyway, but fortunately for us, that's gonna be one of the ones we're gonna put some art in front of, so.
Excellent.
So anyway, we're real excited about that. And real quickly here, we did sign up for the Youth Science Program, it's Y-O-U-Science, and this is a really cool thing that's going on throughout the country. This company goes into school systems and does these tests, kind of like, I would say, similar to, remember taking the ASVAB test to see if you were military-grade material, you know, something that, that basically tells you what your strengths and weaknesses are? They, they promote these tests, and they've got several cities in, in Siskiyou that are doing that for the kids at the high school age. And the great thing about it is, we are gonna be partnering with the school system, you know, Chief and I have talked about it, as well as Craig, if there's kids, we have certain positions within our department that they can come in and hit the ground running at age 18. One of them is in our Public Works Department, we've got some young guys in there, to where if, if, if it marries up with the kid, and, and he's like, you know, I always wanted to be a heavy equipment operator, boom, well, there's, you know, here's a partnering agency right here, the city of Weed. So if we have openings and those type of things, so it gets the kids thinking, stay local, you can stay here and get a job with the city. Like I said, we've got two young men that have just recently come on to our, our, our Public Works Department. Also, I talked to Chief, we got people, you only have to be 18 to be a dispatcher, you don't have to be 18 to be a firefighter, so there's positions here where we can start recruiting, same thing, working in our front office, you don't have to be 21 to, you know, work in utility billing or those type of things. So anyway, I'm excited about that, we're gonna start, we, I've already gone on and set up our, our parameters of the things that we're looking for, the talent that we're looking for, and it's gonna be not just Weed kids, but if there's kids in Mount Shasta or something else, but it's helped, it helps the kids, first of all, think that there are local opportunities for me. And, and anyway, I'm excited about that program. Last but not least, I wanted to just pay honor tonight to somebody. Between the last meeting and this meeting, we, we lost a team member here at City Hall, and real quickly, I just wanted to tell everybody, in early 2021, I started running again, I, I had a knee replacement in 2019, I started running again, and I was running around the neighborhood. Mark, you're a runner, too, so you see the same people a lot of times, and I kept seeing this one lady, big tall lady, running, and then one day, we were both, you know, when you're a runner, you just kind of give the little wave as you're running by, you know, you usually got earbuds in and, and thinking of other things. And at one time, we were both crossing paths, and she said, we were just both taking water breaks, and she asked me, how, how I'm doing, just very friendly, how you doing, and then I noticed immediately she had braces, and, and very pleasant, very friendly, and I asked her, I said, so when you're running, you sometimes ask, are you training for something? And, because if you see the same people running constantly, a lot of times they're training for something. And she said, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna run a 50K race. I was like, wow, because I've ran several 10, 5K races, they're 3.2 miles, and I said, that's 32 miles. She goes, yeah, I know. I said, have you ever ran a marathon? She goes, no. I said, you've never ran a marathon, but you're gonna run 32 miles, a marathon's only 26 miles. She goes, yeah, I know. And I said, okay, and then we talked a little bit, I got home, and Brandy asked me how my run went, and I said, well, I met this lady, she's either completely crazy, or one of the most optimistic people I've ever met in my life. And little did I know, our paths would cross about six, eight months later, when I hired her to be our finance director. And she was super excited, we were super excited, and we all know what her journey was like. And I will tell you, it was devastating for us when we first found out, but my team was there with Anna every step of the way, we threw little parties for her every time she reached a certain milestone, and it was, and, and her optimism and her enthusiasm was just contagious, she was an open book for us. I've never been around somebody that's gone through cancer treatment that close, and she would just like, you know, one time I was asking her all these questions, because I don't know anything about it, and I said, if this is too personal, she goes, no, this is just medical, ask me, I'll tell you. And she did, she answered every question you had about her, her, her treatment. And, and unfortunately, I was there also when we found out the bad news, that it came back, so, but she had a beautiful service, most of us were there a couple weeks ago, and just gonna be deeply missed here at City Hall. And, and like I said, it was tough watching somebody at, at that age going through something like that, and just, but it was also, I, I think for us, a, a, as a team, it pulled us closer together, too, with, within this building here, and having somebody that we all had something in common with. I know Craig's wife is, is cousins with, with Anna, and we talked, and Craig said he's known Anna her entire life, and he said he's never met a single person that had one negative thing to say about her, not one person. And that just kind of shows, like I said, that, that very enthusiastic, opt, very optimistic about life in general. And anyway, gone too soon, but will be missed, and very, very much loved in this building. She had an impact with every single person here in this building, and anyway, I just wanted to pay a special tribute to her and tell her that we're all thinking about her, and thinking about her family and her boys, and Martine, Martine did an incredible job at the funeral with the, he had a little bit of humor into the, to his eulogy, but you could tell it was heartfelt. And for those that don't know, Martine and Anna started dating in junior high, and for almost 30 years, they were together, so. But keep Martine and the boys in your thoughts and prayers, I, I think they need it right now, and, but anyway, I just wanted to pay a, a special tribute and, and honor her for the person she, she, she was, and, and the person that she, you know, even though her tenure here at City Hall was short-lived, she will be missed, and that's all I have to say. I, I agree, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with everything that you said.
Yeah.
I ran a little quick, I used, I pushed myself to where I was going eight miles, and I would come in and say, that's for you, Anna. And so, when she said she was gonna get better, her and I were gonna run some race, or just a run, you know, so that particular day, I did my normal run for her, but, yeah, she, I can't say enough, and I know how deep it's hurt everyone that know her.
Yeah.
And you, once she touched you, you'll never forget.
Yeah.
She's an inspiration, there's no doubt, that's a huge loss for the whole community of all the people she's, she's touched.
And, and when I went to the funeral, I, I, I said, you know, I told Brandy when I got done, I said, half, I think half of Weed was at her funeral, I mean, they had the overflow room was full, and everybody was there, and it was.
It was a parking issue.
Yeah, but it was, it just showed how this community, and Ken and I talked about this earlier this week, about how certain things can bring a community together, and she definitely brought this community together at that, on that particular day, so.
So, shortly before she found out she had cancer, she and Denise and I went on a Rotary Convention, and we were having a discussion about a project that she wanted to do in Rotary, and that, we'll be coming out with that shortly.
Awesome, awesome. Now, any way we can honor her, it would be tremendous, and she deserves every bit of it. And that's all I have.
It has, it might have something to do with running, so you can know, Daryl and I will be on the sidelines cheering people on.
I'll be right there with you.
So you got it, all right, so, and that, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Hard to follow that.
No, and I'd like to say thank you for doing, for bringing that up.
Yes.
I forgot.
All right, well, that brings us to the end of the meeting, would like to wish a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to the city staff, council members, all of our public, and thank you to those of you that came to our meeting tonight, would like to highly encourage our citizens and people in our sphere of influence to participate and give us your feedback, and help support our city to grow and improve.
Daryl's phone number will be posted on the, on the city website.
Or just go downtown and find him. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
No.
We have a motion.
That checks.
This is Chuck, Chuck, I make a motion we adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Check it.
There you go.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Keep the fire burning.
Thanks, David.
You look good.
Burness is fixed, so it's.
Keep the fire, keep the fire burning, you look good.